Very good evening, good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the work session for the city council for the city of Wildwood for Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. Eldridge, would you please call the role?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bar Tony.
Here.
Councilmember Nian.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Here.
Councilmember Flasher.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano. Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Onberg.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Here.
Councilmember Hopper.
Here.
Councilmember Galani.
All right, thank you and welcome. Moving into informational items, it looks like we have fifteen. Before we go to action items, is, does any member of the council wish to ask a question about or discuss anything that is shown as an informational item? All right, I don't see any hands showing anyone online. Okay, so that'll take us into action items. The first action item is the strategic plan. Just by way of background, as you know, Councilmember Clark, with the assistance of some others, has, for lack of a better way of saying it, and not to demean it, tidied this up and closed a few loops on it, made it a little more particularized and so forth. And I think it's before the council tonight for approval. Is that correct, Councilmember Clark?
That is correct.
All right. Anything you want to mention at this point?
I would.
Go ahead, please.
Kind of go over it a little bit.
Sure.
You know that I'm a bit obsessed with the strategic plan, and if you look in front of you, you have a copy of it that Ms. Eldridge was so kind to print out, and now you can take that home and frame it and put it on your wall if you'd like, because it's very large, but it's, it's not so much the document that I'm obsessed with. It's just the, the strategy and that our stratagems that we put diligent hours into developing. And Mayor Boland had this proactive idea and had a systematic process to develop our five-year strategy. And this would allow us to work as a team and share our own ideas based on our city's wants and needs. As we were putting this together, City Administrator Cross made a comment that this five-year plan is not a document that we develop and put in a drawer. It's the, something that we only look at five years later. It must be reviewed and updated on a periodic basis. It should become the umbrella for prioritizing our work and budget. We agreed to review and update this once a year, but unfortunately, that didn't work. So it started in early twenty twenty-one, and it seems that it hasn't been updated much since then. This will of course take a concerted effort to to put it all together, but it, in the long run, it will be worth it. This will save us time in the long run. It'll help measure our progress, help us be more efficient, keep us focused on our, our goals, and give evidence when we fill it out of, of our success in meeting those goals. As you can see on there, the plan, it doesn't, doesn't give us, right now, it doesn't give us a picture of the goals that we have accomplished, and we've already been forty-five percent through the five years. So we want to see what we've done and how well we've progressed. The residents are looking at this and asking about it in the coffee with the mayor, so it is something that they want to see updated. If you look at the bottom of the list, I've added some projects at the bottom that are just my brainstorming list of things that we are spending significant resources or significant time and seem to be significantly important projects, but they aren't on our goal list. So I'm sure I've missed a lot of them. These are just things that I thought of and wrote down there. So I'm sure we need to add more, and as we go along, it's a continuous improvement, so we'll be adding things to either that bottom list or put them on the strategic plan list or change things as we go. So I would suggest that we, we keep that in mind as we update. So my suggestions for this, number one, many of the dates, budget entries, et cetera, have changed over the past two years and need to be updated as soon as possible. After updated, we need to review and update, if necessary, each line item by the first meeting of every quarter is my suggestion. If we update every quarter, it will be less work with each update and keep our goals in mind. Two, add a hyperlink smart goal page to each sub-goal. And if you look at your handouts that are on the desk, there's a, a format for following a smart goal process that helps us develop a goal that includes everything that we need. And you don't have to use that format. That's just something that I've used in the past for, when I would give classes, so, but we can we can change it to meet any of our needs. Number three, revise the sub-goal list to include other pertinent projects that we deem to be high priority. Four, prioritize the sub-goals into tiers, and if you look on the, the, right next to all of the sub-goals, there are three columns, tier one, tier two, and tier three. And you have, also have a, a handout that talks about the explanation of the columns, and it explains the tiers. If you want to put your suggestion for tiers, you could look back at the at the numbering system that we, we gave them or, or not. But if you just put on there, if it's tier one would be the most important, most highest need to be done to the three, which is still a very important one, but if you can do that, I can tally them up if you want me to do that and give it to you next meeting. Number five is explicitly list responsible persons' names for both staff and committee chair cells, cells in the matrix. These people don't necessarily have to do all of the updates, however, we need persons' names there in those cells to be responsible for getting it done. So the column explanation sheet, it explains very simply each column that we changed or altered and a little bit moved it around to make it make more sense, and I'm, I'm sure it's self-explanatory, but I kind of put that together for any new person that might be coming on, so it's easy for them to understand. This, this probably sounds like a lot of work at first, but it is something that after we get it underway, it will save us a lot of time and let us be able to measure our success of the project. And I'm not trying to dictate this, but those are my suggestions, and I would also suggest that we look at having even longer, maybe five, maybe ten-year, twenty-year strategic plans in the future.
Well, we'll get through this one and we'll see about that. So just to kind of get this moving, it seemed to me that of the items, assuming the council agrees with it, you know, updating the dates, the adding the hyperlinks, including other projects as needed, the, the tier ranking and, and then assigning names, and I think, I think I got all of them. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Councilmember Clark, but it seems to me that the, those four items, in other words, everything but the tier, which we need council input, could be done on an administrative basis, maybe if you were willing to do it by working with the city administrator. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, myself or someone, whoever, you know, future.
And we're going to get to that. Yep. And then relative to the tiering, if, if, if the council wants to do that, and I think that's a great idea, if they could get you, if we could set a target date like a week from today or ten days from today, whatever all of you are comfortable with, if you want to offer any input into that to get those to Teresa, and I guess where I'm headed with this is, would there be any objection, assuming you're willing to do it, Councilmember Clark, for her to take this to the goal line and work with the city administrator on the four items I mentioned, and then get input from all of you relative to the tier ranking and bring this back at the April meeting. Is that okay with everyone? I'm seeing everyone saying yes. Councilmember Dodwell.
I do have a question on what is attached online to the agenda, because I see several different types of documents in the categories or in this particular category, and when I click on smart goals with questions and column explanations and the plan draft, anything that's a spreadsheet, I get just spreadsheet named three, five, zero, seven, zero. That's it. So.
If we could, whoever Travis or whomever at City Hall, they could check that.
If you could check that, just to make sure, because I'm sure there's some legitimate additional information that at least I'd like to be able to see the the strategic plan IDs, ideas, I can't say it, but I want to see it. Sorry about that. So.
We'll get that taken care of. Councilmember Edens.
Yes, two, two thoughts. Thank you for the tremendous amount of work you've done, and I'm glad we got to use their plotter printer again, since we've, since we have one, but you know, as we make this more and more specific, one of the things, which is not a bad thing, it's, it can be a good thing. It's easier to track, you know, results. But I'm concerned that the things that we haven't put, that when they come before council, the thought process will be, well, it wasn't specifically listed in the strategic plans, why are we spending money or, or talking about it? And when we developed this, one of the things we did, as we all know, is this was about us as elected officials and council members and our goals and vision for the community, and it's our document. The only thing we didn't really do a good job of was maybe asking staff and department heads for lists of goals that, that they thought we should include, simply because they're going to have knowledge of, of other types of expenditures that might be coming up that maybe we didn't list. So for example, I know that guard rail expansion on Orville has started, but was identified by Public Works years ago, but isn't on this list. I'd love to see that continue. I don't want it to come before council and someone to say, well, you didn't list it specifically on the strategic plan, but it's on a departmental goal sheet. So how do we merge those? Can you, maybe can she reach out and come back with them?
I think as a practical matter, I mean, council could do as it wishes, as a practical matter, trying to encompass each and every nook and cranny of things that we're going to be doing and will be doing in this document, I'm not saying we shouldn't strive for that, so, or I'm not speaking whether that should be included or not. But I, I don't know that that's really practical, just be given the volume of stuff that comes through here. That's number one. Number two, while, and, and you all may view it differently, but while something may come, if something comes before you on this bench that is not specifically in the strategic plan, there's no rule that says, because it's not strategic, strategic plan, it can't be approved. Now, someone who may, may make the argument, as you point out, well, it's not in the plan, and they can make that argument. And the council can debate that, but, but just because it's not in the plan, doesn't mean it, it shouldn't be there. But I guess my question back on the specific, kind of to peel the onion with this, on the Orville project, was that brought up when this was developed?
Yes, and I was told not to worry about putting it on, but now that everything's been added and other, other constituents have added over time, I'm, I'm concerned that, that I followed the rules and
Why were you told not to?
Get left behind. Well, I think because we had already started and, and because this was for new projects, and now I'm concerned this is the only projects.
Well, what I would suggest, okay, so, so Councilmember Clark made the point that this come back to the council on a quarterly basis. I'm going to try to get her to every four months as opposed to every three, but we're going to have that discussion in a moment. But I think when it comes to the council, that's the time, it is a fluid document, as you or someone just mentioned, and I think that's the time to bring that up. I'd say let's get this, the mechanics, the, the, the ministerial stuff done, the cleanup done, and then when it comes to the council, maybe at the next meeting for, for approval, final, final approval. If you want to add that in, do it then.
Okay, yeah.
Because I see that more substantive than this. I see this as, these things as being largely ministerial, just to kind of get it.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember, and, and thanks for agreeing to that. Councilor Jaxi.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to Councilmember Clark for all your hard work. I, I do greatly appreciate it. And Councilmember Dodwell, I had the same thing happening when I was clicking, I was getting the same title, but if I clicked and held and told it to open, I would get each of the individual documents that you created, so. Thanks.
So would you be okay, Councilmember Clark, with every four months as opposed to every three?
I would be. I just wanted to give a time to start with, so that we make ourselves do it.
So I think by consensus, we have the marching orders on this. If you can reflect that in a minute. Any other questions? Councilmember McCutcheon.
So Councilmember Clark talked about identifying which we felt was tier one, tier two, and tier three. So is there going to be an electronic way to do that, or how are we going to go about that?
I, do you have a preference on, Councilmember Clark?
Well, I can send out just the portion of the, the strategic plan, that portion of it, if you would like, and you can just check them and say, back to me.
Okay.
That'll work great. Thank you. Okay, so you'll be getting that, and what are your thoughts? I know you're, since you're going to be doing the work, a ten-day window for return, a week, what?
I think a week, and so that we can get it together and bring it back to the next council meeting.
Okay, seven days from today. Everyone good with that? All right, excellent. Moving next, the gas utility pack. So I'm going to do my best to explain this. Gets kind of complicated, but basically, and this is something that is on the agenda for the council meeting for decision under legislation. So essentially, what's happened is Spire obtained a seven percent, and I think that's larger than typical from the PSC. Approval for rate increase, and as you know, the city of Wildwood has, and for many years, perhaps since our founding, a gross receipts tax on all utilities, not just on, on the bills that our residents get, not just Spire, but Ameren and so forth. The law requires when something like this happens of this magnitude that the city take official action as to, correct me if I'm explaining this wrong. The city is required by law to take official action as to whether it wants its gross receipts tax to apply to this seven percent increase. So what the choice will be before the council this evening is one of two options. Do you, one, want the gross receipts tax to be applied to the full extent of the seven percent? So we have the rate increase and the tax would be on what we're currently getting, the, the receipt, the, the gross receipts tax on, like, so if their bill, I'll put it in, in application terms, term. So if it, if the bill is a hundred dollars, their new bill is fifty dollars, the first choice is, do you want the tax to be applied to the full extent of the increase, the one fifty bill? Or two, do you want the tax to remain where it is and be applied to the one hundred dollar portion of it, but not the additional seven percent, the fifty dollars in this hypothetical? Okay? And as you can see from my memorandum, for a number of reasons, and I only listed one of them, my recommendation would be that we apply what we currently have in, like, keep what we currently have in place to the, in this hypothetical, the current Spire rate, which would be the one hundred in this hypothetical, and not apply it to the seven percent component, which would be the fifty dollar extra. My primary reason of several is that we've got a lot of inflation going on. This is an example of that, and our residents are getting hit, and I, we're operating with balanced budgets, and I guess, you know, do we really want to tack on to that? And that, that's my reason for recommending it, but it's up to the council. Are there any questions or thoughts on this? Councilmember Bros.
What is the total that we collect now with the tax with Spire?
City Administrator Cross.
Oh, gosh.
Well, it's in your memo, I think.
No, not, well, I guess in the, or just in the spread. Might be, well, it's in the, yeah, well. Yeah, that, yeah, it is. So right now, right now, that's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we currently get.
So are we talking roughly seven percent of six hundred thousand?
The difference, if you apply it, if I may answer that, the difference if the council decides to keep the, keep the existing gross receipts tax where it is, in other words, to the, the current Spire charge of one hundred in the hypothetical, the difference, and not apply it to the seven percent, the difference is twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents.
It seems relatively minor. People with the little gas bills don't see a break, the people with the big gas bills do see a break. So and I don't have one, so. But, okay, so we're not talking very much money and and it's for people with larger bills versus smaller bills.
Well, it is, but it could be relative, that the person, that amount of five dollars may mean a lot to that person with a smaller bill. Just because it's a smaller bill, I would submit may not be the determining factor with that. Any other, Councilmember Bertolino?
Is Spire Spire willing to do this? Is this, this is not a us initiate, this is a universal, anybody can, any city can do this. We're not asking Spire to do something extraordinary in this case, right?
They're getting their seven percent, and they probably don't care much about what we do in this regard.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So if the council is in agreement that we not up the, or apply the, the gross receipts tax to the seven percent increase, from a procedural standpoint, the way it will work, you have two bills on the agenda. The first is Bill twenty-seven seventy-eight, I believe, second, twenty-seven seventy-nine, and that and, and I, you got an email this afternoon, I asked the city clerk to reword the budgetary implication on both twenty-seven seventy-nine and twenty-seven eighty, a little differently to make it clear. Because the way it read with twenty-seven seventy-nine, it seemed to me we were increasing a tax. We're not. We would actually be keeping it where it is. Twenty-seven eighty is the one that would, Bill twenty-seven eighty is the one that would increase it. So if the council's in agreement that we don't tag on to, you know, the gross receipts tax on to the seven percent, then twenty-seven seventy-nine, that bill would pass. And then I would ask for a motion to postpone indefinitely Bill twenty-seven eighty, which would just kill it. Any questions on that? Councilmember Farmer?
So have we always, like, has this kind of tandem fee been in place the, forever with the gas company?
I don't know how long it's been in place, but it's been around the, the gross receipts tax, is it since our founding or?
The gross receipts tax, goes a long way, yes.
My, my only concern is, while inflation is happening, I doubt very much that Spire is going to decide to roll that back anytime soon. So if we're, if that number's going to keep moving forward, inflation affects us as well, and so if we, are we cutting our legs out underneath us inadvertently now, when all of a sudden if it jumps up again, now we're going to have to tack on a whole bunch of more money.
So you're turning it on?
It's worth noting that the formula that the statute requires has a growth factor into it to address any inflationary increases, like general inflationary increases. So we are still getting more based on those general inflationary increases, just not because of the large increase that Spire is asking for on the rates.
Okay.
Councilman Nian.
So if other utilities increase their rate, would we look at that separately, or if it wasn't some, some of seven percent, would we just
So you're turning it on?
The utilities go to the Public Service Commission on an individual basis, and the statutory requirement that mandates that we review these ordinance provisions is only if their rates increase by seven percent or higher.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so we'll see what happens with that when we get to it on the main meeting agenda. Next, under Planning and Parks, the gate installation for fire district at Birch Forest Drive. Who want, Mr. Vinnich, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I certainly can, and Mr. Brown can assist if I miss something, or if he'd like to add something. Very briefly, at the last meeting in February, City Council asked that the Departments of Planning and Public Works investigate three items, the first being to place a camera at the terminus of Birch Forest Drive, Brightleaf Court, to see how many people are using it as a cut-through, primarily vehicular traffic. Second, we were to meet with the Fire Marshal, explain the concerns of the city council, and see if another solution to controlled access could be developed. And then finally, to report back to city council, which is occurring now. The police department did install a camera, and they basically had it in place for approximately twenty-one days. Results of the investigation indicated that no vehicles crossed through the cut-through, so to speak, based upon the installation of the two posts that are pinned to the ground. The Departments of Public Works and Planning did meet with the Fire Marshal. He was leery of the current situation, meaning the two posts that are pinned to the ground, and offered an option of flexible delineators. Along with that option, he recommended we visit a location where they have been installed. They come in different colors, heights, the diameter of the delineators, and the thickness of the materials that form the delineators. Mr. Brown and Mr. Ron created an image of that, which, which would replace the two posts that are in that location now. From that perspective, the Fire Marshal would prefer the flexibility of the delineators versus the static nature of the current post. Tonight, the two departments are offering the findings of the charges that they were given to by the city council and seek direction in this regard. Mr. Brown, would you like to add anything? Thank you.
Just briefly, Joe, I would say that Travis kindly has shown the image here that's proposed. There won't be a lot of change noticeable, frankly. The proposed poles are about three and a half feet shorter. They are flexible, and they would be retained with the, the object marker sign on the pole. So the theory is that the trucks could drive, essentially drive right over them in the event of an emergency, so they would be bolted into place, but would be flexible such that a large vehicle like a fire equipment truck could drive over that sign, and that's what our marshal Cook was receptive to. Thank you.
So are we looking for a motion, Mr. Vinnich from the council, to proceed with the recommendation for these new divider posts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we could, the Departments of Public Works and Planning will request a motion to accept that particular design, which is consistent with the direction of the Fire Marshal. Thank you.
Does someone wish to make that motion? Uh, Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, is there? It doesn't look very clear to me on the on the screen, so is there a way we can actually view it before we vote on it?
Not in physical form. You'd probably need to well, maybe, maybe so. You're, you're saying view it installed or view it like if they brought one here?
Yes, they brought one here so we could see what it's like.
Is it possible, is that possible, Joe or Rick?
Well, certainly the posts themselves, we could certainly make them available for their installed, if, if that's the direction the council would like to go, but they are forty-eight, basically forty-two to forty-eight inches in height. So they are shorter than the poles that are, the, the
Um, so they are shorter than the poles that are, the the posts are installed currently.
Well, then let me ask it this way, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
So. The previous ones were metal and they were silver. So the new ones, what would they be made out of and what color would they be?
Um, Councilmember McCutcheon, I think the thought was just to make them, supply them or purchase them as black in color. Um, they're a hard plastic material. And they're kind of oval in shape, but um, they can supply them in a number of colors, but I think from our perspective, black would probably look as nice as anything, quite frankly.
You wanna make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we accept the um, department's recommendation for the um, installation of the um. What are the colors? What I, whatever. I don't know what they're flexible posts um, as um, suggested.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Bertolino, Councilmember Dodwell?
Real quick question, um. Are we going to put the same type of components up at Turnberry off of Strucker? Because what you have there looks nothing like this. This looks a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and not quite is. It's not bright orange, let's put it that way.
So.
Just curious.
Would you like me to respond to that, Mayor?
Yeah, it's a different topic, but go ahead.
Well, I all I was gonna add, Mayor Boland, is that is on the agenda for Adam and Public Works, I think that was requested, so it will be discussed tomorrow night as part of the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good answer for that. Okay, any just Councilmember Farmer?
Uh, yeah, Rick, I don't, I may have been over there before the original stuff was fully put in, but I think that there was only the reflective things on the Brightleaf side. If if it's possible, it would probably be a good idea to put one on both sides, so people coming from the other direction. See what's going on.
Um, Councilmember, yes, appreciate the thought, we've been discussing that as well, um. Didn't think we felt it was quite necessary from the other direction because it's on at the end of a cul-de-sac and they're not necessarily marking the end of a a dead end like Birch Forest is.
They could always be added later if it's needed.
It could be added later, yes, yep.
Okay, he's good. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item, Hard Court Area Community Park, Mister Vinnich.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor and members of the City Council. The city completed the business bidding process for the Hard Court Area in Community Park. Three contractors bid on the project. One bid was below the budgeted amount for this year of four hundred thousand dollars. This particular matter was presented to the Planning and Parks Committee and they endorsed proceeding forward with the Hard Court construction utilizing the low bid, which was Ideal Landscaping Group. Tonight, the Department of Planning is respectfully requesting authorization to prepare the necessary legislation and contracts to proceed forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Flasher?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion uh, by Councilmember Flasher uh, to proceed, seconded by Councilmember McCutcheon. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion? I'm sorry, Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, the only, the only problem I have with this is we have gone over, um, we started out with a budget of a hundred thousand dollars, went to two hundred and now at four hundred thousand and the and the total cost was three ninety two, three forty eight, which leaves us very little, about seven thousand dollars contingency. Leeway wiggle room to um, make any changes in it. And we do that often, need to extend the budget, so I I still say if we don't have like a ten percent contingency there, going over the four hundred thousand, just. I I can't support it at that.
Great, thank you. The other discussion on the motion, uh, Councilmember Rainbow, I see your hand raised. Did you want to speak on this?
I'm very sorry, I don't know why or how it's raised and I can't see the icon, I'll try to take care of that, sorry.
It was, I'm sorry, it's not you, it was Travis's hand, it was his cursor. That that mimics a hand when it goes over your spot for some reason. Yes. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Want to oppose, Councilmember Clark, any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, next, Center Avenue Bid Specifications, Mister Brown. Or is it Mister Vinnich?
Sorry, Mister Mayor, it's me again, my apologies. Mister Mayor and members of the City Council, as you know, recently Center Avenue became a public street after being a private roadway for many, many years. As part of that process, the Planning and Parks Committee has been reviewing next steps in making Center Avenue a true town center street. One of those was to reengage an engineer to update the construction drawings for the street, reflective now of the ownership of the city of Wildwood and the desire of many of the residents along Center Avenue to have a pedestrian facility added. The Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works offered to the Planning and Parks Committee a request to have the previous engineer update the plans. It was the assumption on the parts of the two directors that having the engineering firm that did the original plans complete them would be less expensive than starting a new bidding process. Tonight before you, you have a proposal from Doring Engineering for approximately thirty four thousand dollars to complete the engineering design for Center Avenue, so eventually it can be bid and a new road constructed. Therefore, the departments are respectfully requesting authorization to prepare legislation for this service. Thank you.
Councilor Garitano?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, um, well, first of all, I'm glad that the center of all avenues is in Ward Eight. And uh, I'm happy to make that motion to proceed with that.
So we have a motion uh, to proceed, uh, Councilmember Gilani from Ward Eight is not with us tonight, uh, Councilmember Dodwell will second. Uh, any discussion on the motion to proceed with having legislation prepared relative to this item? Uh, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, Councilor Brost, um, Investment Policy Language, and so um, you have a couple of items here on this. As you can see from your packet, um, first is a memo from Councilmember Brost, um, next is a memo from uh, Ms. Kaiser, our finance officer, and then we have a copy of our investment policy, which I believe is based on the uh, State Treasurer's policies, that correct, City Attorney Young?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, Mister Brooks?
Well, I guess, oh, maybe the past month or six weeks or so, you know, I'd pose the question as to what the city was doing with respect to investments. And uh, during that timeframe and uh, discussions with the mayor and Steve Cross and actually Don Kaiser and Larry McGowan. Um, I I guess I just started to formulate some thoughts and recommendations. Uh, in large part uh, from my experience. And and I uh, decided that it was very important to summarize them. And I I think not only for the benefit of our city, but also for the benefit of everyone at the dais. Um, we routinely uh, review documents and detail preparing for this meeting. And I think by and large, the city is very good at documenting decisions and record keeping and all that. But, you know, the more I got into this, I felt that like in many aspects, as in any entity or me personally, I just think there were some areas that we could improve. So what I prepared for the meeting was essentially my recommendation, which, you know, I'm just one of the many council members. But my recommendation for uh, some actions I think the city should do. And and I guess as background, I think in the previous uh, memo that uh, the the city's practice uh, essentially went toward investing its funds in overnight repurchase agreements. And and I you know, hindsight's twenty twenty most of the time, and none of us are good at predicting the future, but if I went back in time, I'm quite confident that if I was charged with that, just like if many of us were charged with it, we may have reached a different uh, portfolio. So it's not say, you know, there's more than one right answer here, but I don't think I would have taken that path. So. So one, where we're at today is we essentially have our our portfolio, um. You know, essentially in a repurchase agreement or repurchase agreements that are transacted daily. You know, I don't think that is the best practice for the city, so um. So what I I presented here is that on my bullet points is that really over the coming six months is that I I think we re- re- review our investment policy. I'm not suggesting any changes, but I do think it's important that that us as a council uh, that we're aware of it and that we're also aware of what the city's doing with. I think the memo we got a month ago was thirty seven million, so it's it's a good chunk of change. Um, so I do think we should be familiar with that and the decisions that the city makes. Um, but in the meantime, uh, when I wrote this memo, we're sort of in a different world than we are today, cause this was last week. Um, you know, I suggested uh, to invest twenty five million um, in a series of treasuries of, you know, less than two years, and I think the two-year window I think is appropriate because I think in that timeframe is is when we conduct a review of our policy, we look for uh, to engage an expert to assist us. But by and large, I've never felt it's a good practice to just invest at one point on a curve and in one given day. I mean, I've never invested a hundred percent of anything in one day. That's just, you know, it just doesn't feel right. And then, as we all know, there was a little bit of turbulence in the financial markets over the last few days. So which also suggests uh, it's not emphasized here, but is implied is diversification is critical. I mean, I don't, I don't care how great you think Bitcoin is, I'm not sure I would have put a hundred percent in it. And I'm not suggesting that's what we're doing. Um, but I do feel that we should look at investing the twenty five million, if we invested into treasuries, they're, at least to date, have always been considered the safest from a credit risk. Uh, you still have interest rate risk. Um, but it is, uh, it's diversifying the uh, maturities and it's and it's diversifying the risk away from having uh, funds at a uh, a single or just a couple uh, banks. Um, you know, side note on this thing is the failure that occurred actually occurred during the day. And versus, I've been involved in restructuring and buying about probably, you know, twenty or thirty banks that fail. They've always, we've always done them at the end of the day. And then we opened the next day or on Monday. This was done while everything was going on. And some of the accounts there that say were in these repurchase agreements. Were they a deposit? Were they a loan? Were they secured? Were they unsecured? I mean, this thing's like moving constantly. And that's just a real. I was thinking about that, but that's side note, cause what are they? Are they deposits or repurchase agreements? Are they loans? Are they secured? Are they unsecured? And it all depends on when all these transactions are trading. But so I still recommend twenty five million out to two years, but really in a in a method to diversify our portfolio um, and give us time to evaluate maybe a an ongoing strategy. I do feel the city should engage in an investment expert. Uh, we don't have the the talent in-house, and I make the analogy that we could all pretend to be lawyers. Um, we could pretend to be engineers, but we don't. And we shouldn't pretend to be an investment expert. I do believe that the expert in the city would be involved in the review of our policies. And then the last item is is that over a couple of year period, let's build our portfolio. Like, there's gonna be opportunities that come and go as the market, you know, moves forward. Stay within our investment policy for sure, but look for opportunities and we we certainly need to move from where we're at today, which I don't think anyone's disagreeing with. So the bottom line to this, I think, would be number one is I think we need to invest twenty five million dollars in treasury securities with uh, you know, staggered maturities out to two years. And then uh, see like an RFP or review for engaging someone who would assist the city uh, that has the expertise, the the professional expertise with within investment management.
And third, take a look at our investment policy.
I think it'd be part of it, yeah.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank you for your effort in this regard, Councilmember uh, Brost. Uh, taking these one at a time, I'm just gonna throw out some options here, um. Before I do that, though, I have one question. Relative to Councilor Brost's second bullet about investing the twenty five million is recommended by Commerce Bank, but limited to maturities from ninety days to two years. Is that something that can be done with the current, consistent with the current investment policy as it's written today? City Administrator Cross?
Short answer is yes.
Okay. So, um. Thank you. So with that, um. Kind of dissecting this in chronological order, um. Of the three items, is there any objection? Let me ask it this way, is there any objection with uh, proceeding with the recommendation of Councilmember Rose relative to the twenty five million that, as you just noted, would be consistent with the investment policy of the city? I'm seeing no objection, so by consensus, the minutes reflect that's where we're headed. Next, Councilmember Rose?
Yeah, the the one point I also want to make is, um. The twenty five million dollar number was developed by Commerce Bank. And part of my recommendation is also is that the city um, internally uh, evaluates the level that can be invested because it still leaves twelve million, in my mind, unaccounted for. It it and it like, does it need to be twelve million? I mean, it's not to say every entity needs to keep their below two hundred and fifty thousand to be FDIC insured. We may need one million, two million, three million. But we should make that conscious decision as to whether it's twenty five or twenty nine or seasonally or based on pending capital improvement projects, that is something we should do.
So I think my thought would be that comes within the next item, which is a review of our investment policy. Okay, are you good with that? Okay, Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, Larry, one, did Commerce give you any kind of data that is, that says you're in your current investment strategy? Your projected return over the next two years is X. If you do the twenty five million in securities, you will, you know, you will re- return Y. Did they do that for you and say what's the? In that two-year period? Annually, okay, thank you. What what would the current investment strategy give us? Do you have any idea?
Um, well, I I don't, I mean, it was currently you're we're we're looking, I think the repos in that memo were like three point eight percent. And the shorter term treasuries, again, the world changed the last few days, but the shorter term treasuries were, you know, four point eight, four point nine percent.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so to the second item, which is a review of the investment policy, um. And my recommendation would be that this be referred by the council to Admin Public Works. Uh, for review. And one thing that I think would be important for the council to hear. Um, at this point, before we go down this road on the assumption that we're going to. Uh, I'd like our city attorney to just let us know one important thing about our investment policy. And and it's mirroring of the state treasurer's policy. Can you do this in open session?
Yes.
Okay, um, and why that's important. So, city attorney, yeah.
Yeah, the statutorily, there is a regulation that establishes what. Investments are allowed and what investments are not, and the policies for that. The state treasurer is obligated to uh prepare a model investment policy. And if the city adopts that model investment policy, we're deemed to have complied with the statutory requirements for our investment policy. Uh, to the more, to the extent we tinker with it more beyond what, which in our current one is substantially similar. If not exactly what the model investment policy is, and the more we tinker with it, the. There's a chance we may not be deemed to be in compliance, but again, that would require an a review and analysis of the proposed changes.
Okay, two things. One, and the benefit of that is what? The benefit of having it tailored to match the the state treasurer's policy is is what?
It it the short answer is it's a, we are compliant statutorily if we adopt that policy.
And why do we?
Which means we won't be, officers won't be held responsible if for some reason. They act inconsistent inconsistent with the statute if they're consistent with the policy.
Okay. And then my second question is, and I don't want to. I know you're going to have to review what the actual language is and so forth, but relative to the ideas that. For example, the council just adopted one relative to the twenty five million and the the ninety day to two year maturity and treasuries and so forth. Is it your legal opinion that's satisfactory? In 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 terms of being consistent with, I mean, we heard it's consistent with our policy, but that's not going to disrupt the issue or affect the issue. You just described relative to the state treasurer in the statutory compliance.
It being consistent with our policy and our policy being consistent with the model, no.
Okay, so I just wanted the council to hear all that. Councilman Rose.
Yeah, I guess for John on the policy, you know, my thought is 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 that. I mean, we also need to know, you know, the optimum amount to invest. So that could be policy or it could be practice. Would you agree with that?
I think the short answer, I believe, would be yes. Yes.
Yes, either.
It could be either one.
We could develop a formula, but you know.
Uh, because the reason I'm asking is if if, to me, it's a very prudent thing to do, but if it varies from. The recommended state policy.
Well, the state, the state policy is not going to establish a dollar amount because it's going to vary from year to year, financial condition to financial condition.
Does it establish a percentage that like if the state has X in this account and reserves and so?
No.
Okay, but we'll get, we can hash that it. Councilmember Dodwell.
Might I recommend that we have a subcommittee of the Admin Public Works take this task on? So that perhaps they can move through it a little bit more quickly.
I think that would be an issue that um someone can bring up to the chair and could be discussed at the upcoming Admin Public Works meeting.
I just think we have some expertise. Um, and then we could also engage um. Ms. Kaiser and um. Any other outside entity that we feel would have some expertise. Uh, with a smaller group and get things moving a little bit more quickly. But.
Um, yep. That committee can decide. Um, okay, so so any objection to having Admin Public Works proceed with the review of our investment policy? And coming back to the council with recommendation. Nope. Okay, last item, investment expert. Um, for what it's worth, I wholeheartedly agree with this. Uh, let experts do what experts do. My thought would be, uh, and Councilmember Rose mentioned this, um, utilizing the RFP process. And I think, I guess, just to throw out for discussion to get the ball rolling, that that would also be uh an admin PW uh function. So would there be any objection with that committee handling uh this item as well? In other words, developing the the uh RFP itself, um, and I'm sure we can find some. We need to reinvent the wheel on that. And then uh a process for identification of those it should go to. And evaluating those results and and bringing uh a recommendation back to the council as soon as possible. Any objection to that approach? All right, seeing none, that's what we'll do with that by consensus. Thank you again, Councilmember Brost for. Putting this together. All right, next is um on the agenda before we go in the executive session, PZ eleven twenty two and. Uh, fifteen twenty two. So as you know, uh, so these concern solar panels. At the last meeting, the council wanted to take these up. And to do that, you have to uh set a hearing date. Uh, subsequent to that, um, as I point out in the memo. The um Planning and Zoning Commission has uh on a vote of um nine to one, I believe. Uh, well, there was, I don't know how many were there, but there was one abstention, one vote against it. Uh, they are uh they are proposed changes to our ordinance concerning this. That if it is adopted by the council, so it's going to be coming to the council, as it obviously has to do. If it is adopted by the council, um, it would address these two things and essentially make them moot. And so um my recommendation uh for the council this evening, just for the exp. The dining of business and doing it in a logical format would be to postpone consideration of uh these two items. Until the council gets that ordinance change before it, which will happen by May, correct?
I believe it will be before you, as a public hearing at the earliest in May, and I would ask Mr. Vunich to correct me if I'm if I'm wrong on that.
Okay, um, Mr. Vunich.
Mr. Young is correct. We'll have it back at Planning and Zoning Commission in April and to City Council in May. Thank you.
And it does a cut, just FYI, conceptually does a couple of things. Uh, it does contain limitations relative to uh front facing visible solar panels. But it also expands the use of solar panels that can be integrated, front facing or not into the structure. So it 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 does a little bit of both. Councilor Bar Tony.
Um, thank you. So I I guess I got my one question is, why isn't this on the agenda? I mean, we exercised our power to review and it should be on the main agenda as a public hearing. Um, staff seemed to understand that. They put signs out and mailed uh public hearing notices to the public. We asked the city attorney at the last meeting what the procedure was because it had been a while and needed some clarification. So why isn't this on the agenda?
That's a great question. Uh, the reason it's not on the agenda is because uh when we got into the ordinance language. For the council to exercise its right review on it, it specifically requires the council to not only take it up, so to speak, as you did. But to specifically set, and it has to be reflected in the minutes, a date for that to be presented back to the council. And that date was not specifically, there was no date set. So it was, it's more of a technicality than anything. Um, well, it is a technicality period. So that's the answer.
Okay, so if I could follow up, because I I don't think that. What P and Z is working on right now would necessarily make these two cases moot. Um, because from what I understand, they are very restricted. Um, with what is P and Z is working on now. So that being said is, and I couldn't find anything in our code, but it's kind of hard to find stuff when you're looking for something specific. Um, when we do exercise our power to review, is there a time limit on that? Like, do we have? It's got to be done within thirty days or sixty or ninety, or is it like an open ended thing?
Uh, good question, city attorney Young.
There is no specific timeframe within which to schedule the hearing.
So we can still bring that back up in front of council?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm going to disappointingly go along with this, but I. Technicality, I guess, is a technicality, but I actually would wish this was on the agenda. But I guess we'll just have to wait and see what happens.
Yeah. And if there wasn't that problem with the ordinance, I would have definitely had it here. Um, Councilmember Edens.
Yep, so I'd like to make the motion. Um, so it's essentially a postponement until such time as the council takes action on planning and zoning sixteen slash twenty two. Or hyphen, or by um the September meeting date.
Whichever is.
Whichever occurs first.
Whichever first.
Yes, and and the reason why is because, you know, I. I I could see this coming to council. A lot of discussion happening, a lot of amendments. I I don't think we were going to have a first and second reading on the same night for the a big policy like this. There's certainly a lot of public comments. They're all from word two at the moment, so I don't think I can accurately pick a date. So that is why the motion is worded the way it is.
So it's the later of uh September, the September council meeting or um, I'm sorry, the first of. Either the September council meeting or when the planning and zoning uh ordinance change comes to the council.
Well, when we take final action, so I'm not expecting to see it on the same agenda that we get. I'm not scheduling the public hearing the same time we have the ordinance come up for review. We have to have decide final action of the ordinance first.
Your your motion to postpone means that it wouldn't, you wouldn't be deciding, if it passes, the council wouldn't be deciding a hearing date until after. What you're describing occurs. So you don't have to worry about that.
Yes, that's the way I worded it.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Bartoni, any discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilor Dodwell.
We have two individuals who are sitting in a subdivision right now that. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's Hilly in Wildwood. And if you put your solar panels on the backside of a house, I'm going to see them in the homes on either side of me. If they put them on the front side of the house, I'm going to see them in the homes on either side of me. And now you're going to tell these residents that they have to wait potentially another six months. In order to make this decision, which uh if you look at what the Planning and Zoning. Um, committee has indicated, they're indicating that you can either buy. The. Oh, what's the name of the company? The Tesla. Components, which are twice as much as the normal. Standards that are here today. And to me, this whole conversation that planning and zoning has been having around this issue. Is a moot point. You want people to be. Concerned about the environment, concerned about what um impact they have on their neighbors, et cetera. If you have the ability to put solar panels on a home. Reduce the amount of gas or electricity that you're expending, help generate more electricity for your home. For the HVAC, the electrical components in your home, thus reducing the amount of coal that's being burned. I I don't understand why we have to wait so long. To make a decision for these homeowners that had requested these things back last year.
I think the short answer to that, and we're getting off, we're getting into the substance as opposed to the motion to postpone, but.
Substance has something to do with the motion.
And I'm, yeah, and substantively, to answer your question, I think, and there's obviously a difference of it, there can be a difference of opinion on it. But I think the short answer is that the Planning and Zoning Commission, at least, uh, while it shares, uh, I'm. Speaking for all of them, I mean, and they each each one of them probably has different opinions on this to some degree. But in general, my read of it is, to answer your question, that while they respect the points that you raised. They have heard contrary points um from Wildwood residents that simply don't want them.
How many Wildwood residents? We have thirty seven thousand residents.
Yeah.
And if we had, how many come to planning and zoning and complained about the potential of having to see a solar panel on a roof? Instead of the shingles.
So to answer that question, we haven't had many uh come to planning and zoning on either side of it. Um, but I did run the numbers at one point, and there were actually of those who came to speak in favor of it. Uh, from the city of Wildwood, not from other cities. So from the city of White, not from the Solar Association. From the city of Wildwood and excluding the two petitioners, I believe there was one or two. Uh, they were outnumbered, but not by much of the people who came to speak against it. Um, so on postponement, Councilmember uh Edens.
Yeah, just touching on what Councilmember Dodwell said, so I'm just working on a a strict interpretation of of order and process right now. Not about, you know, where I'd like to see the direction go necessarily, because I don't, I don't want to have a public hearing on two homes. And then have a law that outlaws, well, prohibits um that design in the future. And I couldn't get basic questions asked. What if someone's already installed it? Are we going to, for example, allow them to replace one faulty panel? Or are they going to have to replace the roof? Are they going to have to go through a board of adjustment every time for maintenance? So there's some, there's some basic questions I haven't answered for either green lighting or not green lighting. These two petitioners, so I don't really see a way to get that answered without it going through planning and zoning and then coming to council first, having a full discussion. Having a final vote and then reopening the hearing.
Okay, so any other comments on postponement? We do have a second from Councilmember Bartoni, but thanks for asking, Councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor of the motion postponed, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed, Councilmember Dodwell. Any abstentions? Motion to postpone carries. Uh, we are now, uh, let's see, let's do a receipt and file before we go into executive session. Uh, Mr. Vunich, St. Louis Community, uh, College of Wildwood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is a receive and file item. Just to advise you that the traffic impact study that was required by the city of Wildwood. And Missouri Department of Transportation was completed. It indicates that current. Level of roadway improvements will accommodate the second building or phase two of the expansion of the campus. The results of that traffic impact study were a little disappointing to the city, and those are relayed in the memo. Mr. Brown and I are available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Any question, Councilmember Bertolino?
Yeah, Joe or or Rick, uh, I've been at that intersection of one oh nine and um Generations or College Drive. A number of times when classes are switching over. And uh, just it's a minor point, but it only goes on for maybe for half an hour. It's really terrible there, backup of traffic. Can we get MODOT to do a re-study just of the light uh at that intersection uh to give the college um. More greens, I guess you will, to clear out their parking, so it doesn't back up all the way into their into their um, actually into their uh. Parking lots. Um, is that is that feasible, Rick?
Um, Councilmember, um, and Joe can certainly weigh in as well, but I essentially, that was the recommendation of the traffic study. Was that they felt that timing improvements could be made with the existing signal there at one oh nine and New College. As well as the signal at Manchester and one oh nine to better move traffic in and out.
Rick, is that what we're, is that what we're doing? That's the question.
So that's essentially what we're doing. However, I I would caution that there still will be some. Um, some queuing of traffic as it as it leaves classes, um, so it won't completely dissipate with those those recommended, recommended improvements.
Anything other, what, Councilman Clark?
Yeah, I didn't see that um, that traffic um, study report, so I'm not sure what time that they did the study. Um, if they did it at the uh, like they did on one, one oh nine, the last time in two thousand eighteen. It was at um typical uh rush hour times, which does not correlate all the time with. Um, classes coming and going.
Why don't we have the report shared with the council? No, I'm in that. If you could send it by email, Joe or Rick.
Yep, we'll send it out tomorrow, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the receipt and file? Right, so that leaves the executive session. Uh, this will need a motion with a roll call vote. And I would just ask that whoever makes the motion also includes specifically uh Missouri revised statute section, section six ten point oh two one. One in the motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Farmer.
Would be happy to make the motion with the statute you just listed.
Six one oh point oh two one uh, one. Okay, perfect. Is there a second to the motion? Also. Okay, uh, also by third, section thirteen of the same statute.
I love that adventure for us.
So sections one and thirteen of six one oh point oh two one. Thank you, City Attorney Young, uh, seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Nine. Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Flasher.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bros.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper.
Okay, so the motion carries, uh, we are going to go into the community room. For this executive session and um. We won't need anyone other than the city attorney. And later the captain. And that's it for right now. Okay. You have.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our city council meeting for the city of Wildwood for Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Ms. Elders, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Nian.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Here.
Councilmember Flasher.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Ottenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Jaxi.
Here.
Councilmember Hopper.
Here.
Councilmember Glauney.
All right. Welcome again, and thanks to all of you for your patience as we finished, uh, our executive session. Uh, for those who are comfortably able, if you'd please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the minutes are on the consent agenda. We'll get to those, uh, later. Uh, moving next into public participation. I just want to mention a couple of, uh, things about that before we begin. It is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must indicate they would like to do so by filling out a card, giving it to, uh, our city clerk who is, uh, either in front of you or to your left. Uh, or if you're, uh, with us, uh, like, uh, by Zoom raising your, uh, using the hand feature to let us know you want to speak. Uh, when your name is called, please state your name and your ward to ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. There is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when that time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the city council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited, and I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
The first speaker card is James Van Nest.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Attorney, Mr. City Administrator, and Board Members. Uh, my name is Jim Van Nest. I'm Ward One, one, seven, one, three, three, Windsor Crest. I'm here to speak about the Resolution twenty-two-three dash four, the public alleys. It's been being before you many times. Uh, in dealing with the city employees and the city, uh, government for twenty-five years, I've never seen a city employee ignore a directive from the council. At last month's meeting, the council directed, um, Mr. Rick Brown to, to, to add words to the, to the order, to the, uh, resolution, and he has recommended not doing it. So he did not do what the city council directed him to do. I find that's disturbing. Uh, we, when last month, we, we made the distinction between private streets and private alleys, where the private alleys are owned by the, uh, homeowners association. Now requiring, uh, all the signatures of all of the homeowners is negating the powers of the board and of, of the homeowners association, and it's negating the indentures which clearly state that the alleys, common ground, uh, detention basin are owned by the homeowners association. And three precedent, three precedents before that, we've come before the council, and in each time, the public works department and its planning department required only the three signatures of the board. Then those cases, it benefited the city. We, when the city wanted to put a trail into the city park, we turned over our property rights to the lake and the property so the trail could be installed. At that time, we needed the signature of the three board members. And also, we, when they widened City one oh nine, they added all the property in front of our subdivision with derms and landscaping, and we came before the council saying that we would cut the grass, mulch the bushes, replace bushes, fertilize, in return for the city to plow the alleys, which was passed by the city council with the signatures of the three board members. Nowhere has it ever been stunned by the city that we need each homeowner's signature. The reason I'm going against the homeowner's signatures is we've got seventy-seven houses, ten or twelve of which are rentals, and the people are in New York, California, the owners are. It just puts an undue burden when the alleys are owned by this board of, the board and the three board members. So I think, I think it's being unreasonable to re, may put this extra hardship on the subdivision. Uh, we've gone, gone through the, the town center update committee. It was passed. It was passed by the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was passed by you people. December, uh, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and here we're still fighting to get done what Mayor Boland signed into ordinance on December, uh, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. So I would still request that you put the wording for the alleys in the subdivisions be signed by the board of trustees or the homeowners association board. Uh, should you choose not to, we're gonna have to contact, contact our subdivision attorney and see what our next steps will be. And we really don't want to do that. We don't have that much money that we want to go that direction. But if we do, that would cause a conflict of interest with me being on the board of adjustment, and if we have to go that route, I feel I must resign from the board of adjustment effective tonight so that there's not a conflict of interest. So that's all up to you people, which way we want to go. We, we're just trying to get what the city's already passed. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Vicki Robluski.
Hi. Um, thanks again for the opportunity to speak with you regarding two thousand and twenty-three, um, for the resolution. I am Vicki Robluski. I live at one, seven, two, two, seven Windsor Crest. I'm also an original homeowner of Windsor Crest subdivision and the current board of directors president. Um, for those of you that may not be familiar, our subdivision is in Ward One. It is on the northwest corner of Highway one oh nine and Highway one hundred. I was here in December to ask that the alleys be accepted as approved as a part of the town center plan update, and I was here again in February to ask that the policy on public dedication of private streets be updated. City, city council then asked the wording to be revised to consider subdivisions who have board of directors or trustees who help manage activities for their neighbors. Um, Rick, uh, Mr., um, Rick Brown has now indicated in a letter to the council that you received, um, that he discussed it after the meeting with the city attorney, the city administrator, and decided to keep the wording the same to eliminate the likelihood of opposition. Um, for our homeowners, this has been an eighteen-year journey, um, like many others with requests that they are making, but, um, in terms of awareness, um, every single homeowner in our subdivision is aware. They have been involved. Um, we do a newsletter. We also have an annual meeting and discuss this, so it's not for a lack of awareness for communication regarding this manner. Um, I did also speak with Mr. Brown last October, and that was the first time I was referred to the policy. So in many years of talking to city council members about this and coming to our annual meetings, no one ever mentioned that policy. Um, but even though he did, um, share that, that's what prompted some of the discussions that have come here. Um, he did indicate that there was not an interest in transferring the alleys because there's not money in the budget to do so. Um, but no matter how you look at it, this policy still needs to be updated and have wording changes to avoid any confusion in the future. Um, when any request is made. It also, as indicated by Jim, is also a violation of our indentures to not follow those in our processes that we do. Um, so the changes that were made, if you read it still or not clear, and can be interpreted differently, um, at a later date. Our homeowners thought that when the town center plan was updated, our alleys were approved. Um, Windsor Crest has been a good community partner during multiple transactions that Jim mentioned that have benefited the city. Um, we just asked that the updated, um, updates requested be made so that we can continue to move forward with our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Frances Bab.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for listening to me again. Um, number one, I want to say that I.
Please state, uh, where you're from.
I'm sorry. I should know that I do this enough. Okay, big smile. I am Frances Bab. I live at two thousand and one Curstale Court in Clarkson Valley, and I am a solar panel a homeowner there, as well as one at the Lake of the Ozarks, and a third one coming up here in a month or two at the Ozarks. Um, number one, I think that you should approve these two applications for solar permits that have been before you since September of last year. Um, the recommendation I heard at the meeting that happened right before this is this could potentially be postponed as long as September of this coming year. I don't think it's reasonable for an applicant to wait an entire year in order to get a building permit. I think that's unreasonable. I think that the public would find that, um, offensive. I think the press would find it offensive, think the courts would find it offensive, and the legislature would also find it offensive. Okay, um, the most important thing I want to talk about is the document that, uh, city attorney John Young put together that was, uh, discussed at the most recent planning and zoning meeting and was approved by all of the P and Z members with the exception of Mr. Beatty. Um, I think that, um, that the attorney, I hope he got paid well for this because it is a true piece of work, let me tell you. I think that, uh, whenever that somebody does something like this, they give a very bad name to their profession. And I'm here to expose what is wrong, blatantly wrong with your proposed, um, solar regulation that will come before you probably next month at the earliest. Number one, it defines that, um, uh, panels that face a street be, um, required to be building integrated. And building integrated means that, uh, one of three things is defined by your city attorney. Either they must utilize thin film technology, or they must be solar shingles manufactured by Tesla, or they must be what I call true building integrated. And there's things wrong with all three of these, which makes the application of solar on homes and buildings in your community economically unfeasible. Uh, across the board, completely unreasonable. Nobody is going to do any of these things in your city at this point in time. So I'll take today and talk about thin film. I'll come back in a month. I'll talk with you either about true building integrated, and hopefully there's enough people with enough knowledge in the community to know what's going on with Tesla solar shingles. Okay, thin film technology has been around since the nineteen seventies and was popular back in those days whenever that solar panels didn't have the efficiency and the, the price reductions that we see in them today. They come on a roll pre-cut to length, um, kind of like a aluminum foil is, and they're paper, paper-thin, and very, very flexible. But they are not recommended and typically these days not used on residential and commercial properties because there is so much better stuff out there that's cheaper, lasts longer, just across the board. These, uh, thin film technologies are used on mobile applications such as RVs, trailers, and boats. Um, they, um, they last ten to twenty years, or a regular solar panel will last forty to fifty years. They're more expensive, um, although the price is starting to come down. And, um, what else about them? Um, they just don't produce the kind of electricity the solar panel does. Um, thin film will produce about one-third the capacity of solar to one-half the capacity of solar that a regular panel would be able to produce. So if you want to use thin film, you better darn well have a really, really big roof to set them on. Now, these are peel and stick technology, so they, you know, thin with a backer on them with glue, and you peel off the backer and you slap them on the roof and you connect the wires, plug and play, ready to go. The problem is, um, when you deal with, um, shingle roofs as opposed to standing seam metal roofs. The problem is, um, when you deal with, um, shingle roofs as opposed to standing seam metal roofs.
Ms. Bab, your five minutes is up.
See you next month to tell you about the other dirty tricks your city attorney has done.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Glenn Scott.
Uh, hello, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, city council. Uh, my name is Glenn Scott. I live in Ward two at one six two four five Windcrest Ridge Court. Uh, I'm here to talk tonight about, uh, to, well, to introduce myself and talk to you a little bit about PZ fifteen dash twenty-two, uh, that was voted to be postponed. Uh, I still, uh, due to the five-minute time constraints, I wanted to at least, uh, get in front of you all at one time to be respectful of your time and talk about some of the concerns I have with the process, as well as talk with some of the specific unique qualities of my lot. Uh, my home predates the Windcrest subdivision, uh, and as such is not part of the Windcrest Homeowners Association. Uh, most of my yard is a natural resource protection area. So when I plant screening trees, they're there for the life of the tree. Uh, I do not, I'm not allowed to cut down trees in the natural resource protection area. I have been steadily planting trees every year for the fifteen trees and bushes for the fifteen years that I've owned my property, uh, amongst the other improvements that I've been making. Uh, my lot is one point eight three acres. So my lot is closer in size to an NU three-acre zoning than it is to a half-acre R one zoning. Um, the true front of my home faces Pepper Mill Ridge. Uh, but due to, uh, Windcrest Ridge, uh, abutting my property at the back, my, uh, property is one of those that has two, uh, by the legal definition, front-facing, uh, sides. So that severely restricts, uh, my ability to have solar that is not front-facing or visible from an abutting roadway. Even though, uh, past, uh, solar CUPs that have been approved, uh, were approved with the panels being clearly visible from the street, uh, I consider myself a reasonable person and I, and I would much prefer to have a compromise that everybody can live with. The stated goal of having panels not visible from the street aligns quite well with my goal of not having my house be visible from the street. That's why I've planted screening trees every year as I can afford to and have time, and will continue to do so even after this year and into the future. If you look at the handout that I passed, um, you, please note that there are several layers of screening trees already in place, uh, between Windcrest Ridge Court and my home. Uh, there is, uh, a short area, about a quarter of the property line, uh, as it goes along Windcrest Ridge, where, uh, you can see some of my roof. Uh, I've marked that in red for you on the drawing. And if you look in the, uh, area of the blue dash lines, uh, you can see that is the area available to plant screening trees. So there's plenty of area available to plant evergreens and bushes, uh, to further screen my home from, uh, Windcrest. Um, I do not understand why planning and, and zoning department was not able to consider that. Uh, I asked them to consider that several times. I asked them to meet me at my lot, and, and they were not able to do that for reasons that I don't understand. And that is the, the gist of the right, the, of the wrong that I'm asking the council to correct with their review process when you can get it to it. I think to approve my conditional use permit with the condition that additional screening trees are planting is the obvious compromise that meets everybody's needs. Uh, and that's the compromise that I'm looking for you to approve when it comes before the council. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
The next speaker card is Kevin Amont.
Kevin Amont, and the property address is one seven zero one one Manchester Road, um, planning and zoning approved.
We need your address, your, your-
My home, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Uh, sixteen nineteen Ashford Oaks Court, six three oh three eight. Uh, the property concerning the one seven zero one one Manchester Road, it was approved by planning and zoning, and I just was requesting you guys could read it twice tonight.
Which, which bill number was that again? Next speaker, thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Um, I don't have any more speaker cards, but there is a hand raised on Zoom.
Hello, can you see my screen?
Uh, we can, Mr. Downey. Before you begin, I just want to make sure that you were aware and heard the, uh, things that I mentioned before public speaking began, uh, specifically relative to, uh, the five-minute time limit. Were you aware of that?
Of course. Does my five minutes start now?
It sure does.
Thank you. Okay, I've created a little website here.
So we need your name and ward.
Uh, my name is Tom Downey, and I'm in Ward two in Windcrest. Then the amount of misinformation, disinformation, and flat-out lies that have occurred during the planning and zoning meetings was staggering. To refute all of it, there's not enough five-minute slots for me to do it. So I've created a website. Um, and I'll go through some of this tonight, but I'll go through some of it next month and the next month, uh, until we refute every lie and every disinformation that has happened, okay? That will be under the P and Z meetings. For example, tonight, the mayor said that only one or two Wildwood residents spoke in favor of solar. That's not correct. I've listed three of them right there just from memory. I'll get the rest of them. I'll put them on this website. The mayor also said there's absolutely no evidence that suggests solar panels improve the values of home. It goes without saying, there's a link here, you can click on that, and you can watch the mayor say it right there. Other lies, uh, Scott Beerman keeps coming in and saying that our subdivision restrictions show that we can't put solar on the front of the house. That's incorrect. He was corrected several times, but he'll probably come back and say that again. I put a link to our declarations where you'll see the word solar does not appear. I'd like to spend most of my time explaining what I want to do with my house, okay? Um, so this is what my home looks like. Uh, some people have said this is an artist's rendering in the top left. Well, if you consider me an artist, I took the real pictures of real solar panels of the exact make and model that I'm putting on my home. I overlaid them in the exact location they will go so that everyone could see what they look like. In the upper right is an aerial view of my home from, uh, Google Maps, where you can see that the back of my home faces east, the front of my home faces west. So when Scott Beerman says there's a great, uh, spot for me to put southern-facing panels on my home, I would love for someone to ask where that is, Scott. The only spot that I know of, and right here, hopefully you can see a little purple I'm doing, uh, the solar company advised me that'd be a good location to put them. But I said, no, let's not put them there because people would see them driving up the street, and they may get upset by that. So, uh, if you look now on the next row of pictures, the next picture here, uh, uh, on the left is what my home looks like when you're driving up the street from Clayton Road. You would not be able to see the solar panels at all. Uh, also, when the next picture on the right here is what you see when you're driving down the street from the north, you would see the solar panels on top of the garage. If you like, I can plant evergreen trees there so that those would not be visible either. The only place you really can see these solar panels is if you walk across the street to the fountains. The last picture on the bottom is what it looks like across the street from me. What you'll see here is almost nobody can look at the front of my house. It's not like it's gonna bother them. That's Abdul's house across the street from me. We can go ask Abdul if he's got a problem with this. Let's see what else I'd like to go over tonight. So I, I want you to know on the upper right, that's what my roof looked like before I put a brand-new, all-black roof. I asked straight-up solar to give me the highest-end solar panels they possibly could get. These are the top-of-the-line, all-black everywhere, critter guards, everything, all-black roof. I did everything to make this home look as good as possible and as inconspicuous as possible. The new ordinance is proposing, oh, you can put them on the front of your home as long as they're building-integrated. That's not practical. Nobody's going to do that because they're inefficient and they cost triple what it costs to put these kind of solar panels on. I called to get an estimate for Tesla solar shingles, triple the price of mine and less efficient. So if you're wanting people to make it look good, I've done that. Um, as far as home values, false information was put there. I'll put it here. You'll all be able to look over all this stuff. Here's a picture of all the homes you've approved. It's clear what's going on here. There's a delay going on because the mayor and the, and the attorney know that you will fail in court.
So, Mr. Downey, your time, your time is up?
No, it's not. I've got my clock right here. It's not.
Uh, Mr. Downey, your time is up. I'm sorry.
You told me I had five minutes. It's all recorded.
It's all your time. It is recorded and your time is up?
No, it's not.
Do we have any more speaker cards? Okay. So I want to thank everyone who came tonight and participated in public participation. Um, next on the agenda would be, uh, mayor announcements and appointments. We have one announcement. We have a recognition tonight, um, the Gaileys, if you'd be so kind as to meet me over here to the, to your left in front of the dials. All right, so, um, a lot of what goes on in our city, you don't see like when you're in a meeting tonight. Uh, we have a team of some terrific people, of which these are two of, that do all sorts of things, uh, to make our city look good. Um, and so they've actually been doing this for twenty-five years. But we thought that it would be, uh, a nice thing to do tonight, acknowledge for service to the city. For the last twenty-five years, we appreciate it. You make our city look good and keep things going. And so we hope we have another meeting. All right. You think you can do that? All right, so if we could, um, if you could give them a round of applause for your efforts. All right, and thank you so much. Uh, next we have appointments, and, uh, these are on the consent agenda, but I believe we have a couple. We have three individuals tonight that are gonna fill various roles. And I believe we have, uh, two of them in attendance with us tonight. Uh, so I thought as a courtesy, if there's no objection, um, it might be nice if we move those off the, uh, consent agenda while they're here and appoint them. So, uh, we have, um, Ms. Ashley Slaughter with us. You wanna just raise your hand? All right. And, uh, Matthew Raderman in the back. Okay, so Matthew is, um, up for Ward six. Um, he has an outstanding background, and he's up for, uh, a position on our architectural review board. And Ashley, uh, who you may know, uh, have noticed, she comes to a lot of our council meetings. She has a real interest in our city. She's from Ward one, and, uh, she's going on a couple of things. One is the vacant, uh, Ward one position on our Wildwood Celebration Commission, and also on our Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm just real honored to have two exceptional people like them who have an interest in our city and, and want to get involved. And thank you so much for that, and thank you for being here. So, uh, these are the two appointments. Uh, we have one other one we can do, uh, for Ward five later. She's not with us this evening. Um, but if someone would be, uh, hey, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve both of these appointments, uh, in unison, made by, uh, council member Bros and, uh, seconded by council member Jaxi. Ward one and Ward six. Perfect. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the two appointments, uh, please say, three appointments, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations. It's official. Thank you so much. All right. Uh, going back to our agenda, we have one public hearing out of the night, PZ seventeen dash twenty-two. Uh, Ms. Elders, would you please read it?
PZ seventeen dash twenty-two, one seven zero one one Manchester Road. Kevin Amont, care of Jennifer James, Alti Land Surveyors, three nine zero six South Old Highway ninety-four, Saint Charles, Missouri, six three three zero four. A request for a change in zoning from the NU non-urban residents district to the R three ten thousand square foot residence district upon a property that is zero point nine acres in size, which is located on the northeast corner of Manchester Road and Lindy Lane. Street address, one seven zero one one Manchester Road. St. Louis County locator number two four V five one zero seven one five. The subject property is designated the Neighborhood Edge Dist- District under the current town center regulating plan as adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bennett, do you have anything you want to mention relative to PZ seventeen dash twenty-two?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of brief comments. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, before you tonight is the letter of recommendation regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission's review of this particular rezoning request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did endorse and recommend that the city council favorably consider the rezoning. The intent of the petitioner is to change the zoning to the R three ten thousand square foot dis- ten thousand square foot resident district to be consistent with the land use designation of the town center plan, which is Neighborhood Edge. Therefore, tonight, after public comment and any questions, the department will, has presented on the agenda, the bill for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do you have any speaker cards? All right, um, so one thing I just want to mention, you may recall council members at one of our prior meetings, uh, I, uh, mentioned that to expedite things like this coming before our city, that when we have public hearings of this nature, i- if there is a favorable recommendation on the part of, uh, the city, whether it's our Department of Planning or, or what have you, that that, uh, bill would be on the agenda for first reading rather than having a motion to have the legislation prepared and then waiting another month for it. Um, they'll just move things along more quickly, and that's, this is the first instance of that tonight. So we'll get to that momentarily. Uh, moving next into our legislation, we have, um, second readings, um, the first is, is Bill twenty-seven sixty-eight that relates to the timeframe for recording and approved record plat. It affects all wards. The second is an agreement, Bill twenty-seven seventy-one, an agreement with Kelp Contracting for concrete, street and sidewalk replacement. I believe everyone received some supplemental information on that from Mr. Brown today. Uh, that also affects all wards. The next bill for second reading, twenty-seven seventy-two, uh, relates to an agreement, uh, for an engineering study, uh, relative to J turns on State Route one hundred, um, at, at Pond Road, and that affects wards one and six. And the last of the second readings is Bill twenty-seven seventy-three. Uh, it relates to an agreement with Go Green Lawn and Landscape for maintenance of some of our landscaping, and that affects wards one, two, four, seven and eight. Uh, my question is whether, uh, there would be any objection to having these read en masse with one vote uh, on the part of the council for, uh, all of them, to expedite the business of the council. Is there any objection to that? All right, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Eldridge, please be, read Bill twenty-seven sixty-eight, twenty-seven seventy-one, twenty-seven seventy-two, and twenty-seven seventy-three a second time. I'm sorry. Thank you. We have a motion for second reading of the bills made by council member Flasher, seconded by council member McCutcheon. Thank you, uh, Ms. Eldridge. Now please read the bills for a second time. And a vote, is there, is, yes, a vote on the motion. How about that? Is there a, uh, all in favor of the motion for second reading of the bills, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now you can read the second, uh, the bills for a second time.
Bill number two seven six eight, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, amending section four two zero point zero nine zero E of the- amending section four two zero point zero nine zero E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood by deleting it in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof a new section four two zero point zero nine zero E and providing for the timeframe for recording and approved record plat, second reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-one, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute the city contractor agreement with Kelp Contracting Incorporated for the FY twenty twenty-three concrete, street and sidewalk replacement projects, including other incidental items as shown on the project bid documents, second reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-two, an ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city consultant agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated, doing business as GBA, to complete a traffic and conceptual engineering study for a capital improvement project to construct J turns on State Route one hundred at the intersections of Pond Road and State Route T, Saint Albans Road within the city, second reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-three, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a city contractor agreement with Go Green Lawn and Landscape LLC for the maintenance of certain landscape areas within the city, second reading.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Mister Bennett, do you have anything you want to mention relative to Bill twenty-seven sixty-eight?
No, sir, Mister Mayor, but there, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mister Bennett relative to that bill? All right, seeing none. Uh, Mister Brown, do you have anything you want to mention relative to Bills twenty-seven seventy-one, twenty-seven seventy-two or twenty-seven seventy-three?
Um, thank you, Mayor Boll, and no, I do not, but I'm available for any questions from the council.
All right. Any questions from the council relative to any of those three bills? All right, seeing none. Um, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bills twenty seven sixty-eight, twenty twenty-seven sixty-eight, twenty-seven seventy-one, twenty-seven seventy-two and twenty-seven seventy-three.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
And hold on just one moment. Uh, just a reminder to those councils, here we go. Yeah, I just wanted to remind the council members and they, they beat me to the, the punch there. If you're participating remotely, you do need to be visible on the screen to vote on roll call votes, and it looks like we have them now. So, okay. Uh, why don't you start over with the roll call vote uh as to sec- uh the passage of these uh bills?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Nian?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Can you repeat that? Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo?
Yes.
Does it count? Can you repeat it?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Councilmember Flasher?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper?
Yes.
I, can you repeat that?
Yes.
Good enough. Okay. Um, we got part of it at least. So uh that takes us to first readings. The first bill uh for first reading is Bill twenty-seven seventy-four. Concerns an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the uh county, Saint Louis County, as to uh housing municipal inmates. Uh, the second is Bill twenty-seven seventy-five uh relates to uh the new um video providers franchise fees mandated by uh recent Missouri law. Uh, Bill twenty-seven, so, and tha- that affects uh all wards uh as does Bill twenty-seven seventy-four, the intergovernmental agreement. Bill twenty-seven seventy-six, um which relates to wards four, seven and eight, and it concerns a contract with Todd Wagner and Associates for um the uh starting of retrofitting and upgrading of seven basins. Uh, this arises out of our watershed erosion task force that relate to Cox Creek. And then uh Bill twenty-seven seventy-seven relates to approving of a deed in Ward one uh that allows for access easements for uh owners to co-use that jointly use that um that access. Bill twenty-seven seventy-eight relates to the contract with uh Ms. Natalie McAvoy uh for our uh farmer's market that we're going to be doing this summer, and that relates uh to all wards uh as well. Would there be any opposition to handling those, the first reading of those bills by one vote of the council? Okay, seeing none. Um, is there a motion for the first reading of Bills twenty-seven seventy-four, twenty-seven seventy-five, twenty-seven seventy-six, twenty-seven seventy-seven and twenty-seven seventy-eight? Made by Councilmember Flasher, seconded by Councilmember Nian, all in favor of the motion for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read the bills for the first time.
Bill number twenty-seven seventy-four, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated intergovernmental cooperation agreement by and between the city of Wildwood, Missouri and Saint Louis County, Missouri, for the housing of municipal inmates, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-five, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, amending section six three five point zero three zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, and providing for a new schedule of video provider franchise fees, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-six, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Todd Wagner and Associates LLC for professional services in support of the watershed erosion task forces efforts to develop options to retrofit and upgrade up to seven basins located in the Cox Creek watershed, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-seven, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, approving a deed and two exhibits that will allow for the dedication of an access easement considered by city regulations to be a subdivision of property, given it will service more than a single lot from Austin Fort Road, a public roadway, all being part of attractive land situated in the northeast quarter of section seven, township forty-five north range three east, first reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-eight, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Natalie McAvoy for the management and oversight of the city-sponsored farmer's market, first reading.
Okay, thank you. And uh Joe and uh Steve, I may have these uh and potentially Rick Brown. I, I may have these uh incorrectly assigned, but uh let's start from here. Joe, do you have any comments? It looks like uh on twenty-seven seventy-six or Bill twenty-seven seventy-seven? If those are both uh in your territory, um, if I'm correct.
They are, Mister Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
And again, with regards to the access easement, it may seem odd that in this particular case, the department is supporting this. But the intent is to avoid disturbing an area of the property that is not suitable for much disturbance. And so I accessing the property through this e- access easement, less trees are removed, less disturbance i- occurs, and the ephemeral drainage way is protected. This particular easement has already been recorded, but under our code, it needs to be acted upon by the city council. Thank you.
And Mister Bennett, uh what would your uh thought be on having a second reading for this particular bill, twenty-seven seventy-seven?
If the mayor and city council were to support it, the department would respectfully request a second reading tonight.
Okay, thank you. And then uh City Administrator Cross, do you have anything you want to mention on Bills twenty-seven seventy-four, twenty-seven seventy-five or twenty-seven seventy-eight?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, as far as twenty-seven seventy-four and twenty-seven seventy-five, um, I have nothing further to add, but available to answer any questions uh from the council. Twenty-seven seventy-eight would be um um Mister Runich.
Okay, thank you. Mister Bennett, anything you want to mention relative to Bill twenty-seven seventy-eight?
Ms. McAvoy has done a wonderful job at committee meeting that was echoed by many of the council members. The vendors for the market are already calling and it would be much appreciated by the department, and I believe Ms. McAvoy, if there could be a second reading of this bill tonight. She is already doing the work as the manager, not under contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joe uh or Steve on any of these um bills? All right. So they will all be on the agenda for a second reading at the next council meeting unless someone would like to uh move forward with uh and make a motion for a second reading on Bills twenty-seven seventy um, sorry, it's one of them. Twenty, twenty-seven seventy-seven and twenty-seven seventy-eight, which we could do in tandem, made by Councilmember Flasher and seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg. And as you know, to do a second reading um in the same evening requires a super majority vote, two-thirds uh to be exact. Uh, we'll do it by voice and see where that goes, and if that doesn't work, we can always uh do it differently. So um all in favor of a, the motion for a second reading of Bills twenty-seven seventy-seven and twenty-seven seventy-eight, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, uh, we Yeah, motion by Flasher, seconded by Councilmember Ottenberg. Okay, so we do have a super majority requirement met. Uh, Ms. Eldridge, please read Bills twenty-seven seventy-seven and twenty-seven seventy-eight a second time.
Bill number twenty-seven seventy-seven, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, approving a deed and two exhibits that will allow for the dedication of an access easement considered by city regulations to be a subdivision of property, given it will service more than a single lot from Austin Fort Road, a public roadway, all being part of attractive land situated in the northeast quarter of section seven, township forty-five north range three east, second reading. Bill number twenty-seven seventy-eight, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Natalie McAvoy for the management and oversight of the city-sponsored farmer's market, second reading.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions on either of the bills or any questions by any member of the council? All right, seeing none. Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bills twenty-seven seventy-seven and twenty-seven seventy-eight.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Nian?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Flasher?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Councilmember Hopper, could you do that one more time, please?
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, so the bills have passed. That takes us to Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine. Uh, as we discussed in our work session, uh Bills twenty-seven seventy-nine and twenty-seven eighty relate to um action that the city has to take by law concerning a seven percent increase in gas rates from Spire. Uh, the city, since its existence, has had a um gross receipts tax that applies to uh not only this utility, but Ameren. And the issue before the council this evening is whether it wants to apply that gross receipts tax to the uh increased amount that our residents will be getting, the seven percent on their bills, or whether it wants to uh reduce it. Uh, in other words, not apply the tax to that increased amount, uh but to keep the tax where it is as to what Spire's current bills would be to our residents. And as you uh also know, uh during the work session, I provided a memorandum to the council recommending that that be the case. In other words, that we do not apply this tax uh to the increase. If uh the council wants to follow that, Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine would need to be passed. Um, and Bill twenty-seven eighty would become uh moot and we would have it uh postponed indefinitely. So uh Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine uh is on the floor, Councilmember Ottenberg.
I would make a motion for the first reading of Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Nian. Uh, all in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading. Uh, any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine a first time.
Bill number twenty-seven seventy-nine, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, responding to the tariff increase approved by the Public Service Commission of the State of Missouri as it related to gas service rendered in the city of Wildwood, Missouri, providing for compliance with section three nine three point two seven five of the revised statutes of Missouri, first reading.
Thank you. Any discussions or questions? Councilor Ottenberg?
Um, no discussion, but I'm willing to make the motion for the second reading of Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine.
And we actually need that. Uh, by law, we have to get this decided this evening. So that's uh welcome. A welcome motion. Thank you, Councilmember Ottenberg. Seconded by Councilmember Edens. Okay.
May I make a comment after?
Uh, let's take them.
Uh, we have to read it first. I'm sorry.
No, uh, let's get a motion. We, we got a motion. We're gonna vote on the motion then. Okay, so we have a motion, a second and first reading. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, Councilmember Edens?
I had thoughts. Am I? Yes, okay. Um, I'm, I'm going to support this tonight. I would like to take this moment to say that while we're, we're turning down the potential to collect more money, we also had another uh memo about the use tax uh decrease. And so I do this with the acknowledgement that I will need to look at additional revenue sources again. So I hope if you're, you're voting for this, that you're going to maybe look at internet, internet use sales tax in the future. So.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Um, thank you. So um, Jim, I just want to get a little clarity on what you had spoke about in the work session. So if a um, the increase is going to be seven percent. So what is, what is Wildwood's tax on the utilities? Do you know off the, by chance?
It's five percent.
It's five percent. Okay, so if if a customer, if, if a, you know, a aspire customer today gets a bill for a hundred dollars and this passes, their next bill would technically be a hundred and seven. We are only having a five percent tax on the hundred dollars, not the additional seven?
Thank you for the question. That's exactly right.
So, but that being said, does our rate stay at five percent? Or does our rate adjust for the same revenue? It would be like a lower percent, whatever that percent would be. So if it's a hundred dollars, we get five. So do we have to lower our rate? So will we get five out of a hundred and seven? Or is that just that a seven dollars doesn't get taxed?
You're effectively lowering the rate as to this utility only and as to this particular increase.
So we do lower the rate itself. So the whole thing gets taxed? Okay.
The one, in your scenario, the, in your scenario, the one hundred gets taxed, but the one hundred and seven does not get, but, but the seven of the one hundred and seven does not get taxed.
So the rate, uh, Wildwood's rate stays the same?
And Wildwood's rate stays the same.
Okay, thank you.
Well, well, hold on. Hold. It gets reduced as to this particular utility's increase. So instead of, instead of applying the five percent to the one hundred and seven in your hypothetical, the five percent of the city's applied to the one hundred, not to the seven of the one hundred and seven.
So the tax rate stays the same. It's just, I guess our total revenue is less as a percentage. I think I'm following now. So.
Yep, I think that you, you got it.
Okay.
Councilmember.
Yeah, just I guess a clarification. Um, looking at the bill itself, I'm reading that the tax rate does drop to four point eight two eight six percent versus the current five.
Just for this particular utility and this particular tax increase.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, rate increase, sorry. Cause that's the only way to it. Just so, just so you know, I actually had this very discussion. It's kind of hard to get your hands around with the city attorney. That's the only way we can achieve what we're doing.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in second for the second reading. Any further discussion on that? And you, have you read it a second time? But we do have a motion in second for the second reading. So please read Bill twenty-seven seventy-eight a second time.
Bill number twenty-seven seventy-nine, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, responding to the tariff increase approved by the Public Service Commission of the State of Missouri as related to gas service rendered in the city of Wildwood, Missouri, providing for compliance with section three nine three point two seven five of the revised statutes of Missouri, second reading.
Thank you. I may have said twenty-seven seventy-eight. I meant twenty-seven seventy-nine. Um, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty-seven seventy-nine.
Councilmember Nian?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo?
Yes. Yes.
Rambo, sorry.
You, you have to be on the screen to vote, Councilmember.
Oh, I'm s- I, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I hit it.
That's all right.
Okay, yes. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flasher?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper?
I vote yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Uh, that means Bill twenty seven eighty, uh, should be postponed indefinitely. Um, would someone like to make that motion? Maybe Councilmember Flasher, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor of the motion to postpone indefinitely Bill twenty seven eighty, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that takes us to Bill twenty seven eighty one, which is right, arises out of the hearing, um, that we had earlier this evening. Uh, can also relates, let's see, this relates to Board Eight. Is there a motion for first reading of Bill twenty seven eighty one? Maybe Councilmember Garrettano? Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Flasher. All in favor of the motion for first reading of Bill twenty seven eighty one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty seven eighty one a first time.
Bill number twenty seven eighty one, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a change in zoning from the INU non-urban residence district to the R three ten thousand square foot residence district for a property that is zero point nine acre in size located on the northeast corner of Manchester Road and Lindy Lane within the town center area and consistent with the letter of recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated February sixth, twenty twenty three, first reading.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion? Councilor Garrettano? Go ahead. If you want to make a motion, now would be the time. I don't see anyone raise their hand for discussion on the bill.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll make that motion. I just want to make sure the department, uh, find that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vennich, any issues with the second reading of Bill twenty seven eighty one?
No, sir. Thank you for asking.
Okay. We have a motion for second reading of Bill twenty seven eighty one. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. All in favor of the motion for second reading. Oh, before I do that, two-thirds vote requirement, supermajority to do it same night. As I mentioned earlier, we'll try it by voice vote first. So all in favor of the, uh, motion for second reading of Bill twenty seven eighty one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Um, Ms. Eldridge, please read Bill twenty seven eighty one a second time.
Bill number twenty seven eighty one, in ordinance of the city of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing a change in zoning from the INU non-urban residence district to the R three ten thousand square foot residence district for a property that is zero point nine acre in size located on the northeast corner of Manchester Road and Lindy Lane within the town center area and consistent with the letter of recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated February sixth, twenty twenty three, second reading.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, discussion on Bill twenty seven eighty one? Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Eldridge, please call the roll for final passage of Bill twenty seven eighty one.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rambo?
Yes.
Councilmember Flasher?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrettano? Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hopper?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Nian?
Yes.
Okay, Bill twenty seven eighty one has passed. Congratulations. Thank you. Um, so originally I put, uh, on the consent agenda, resolution uh, twenty twenty three dash four on the assumption that there wouldn't be anything terribly controversial about that. But apparently there is. And this relates, as you heard during, uh, public participation to the, um, policy relating, uh, as to the dedication of private streets. And, um, I have had some offline discussions here at the bench with our city attorney relative to what legal requirements uh, we need to navigate relative to this and whether there might be flexibility with that and whether in particular, given that Wildwood, of course, is a very subdivision centric, uh, city. And, um, that, that can be good and bad. And one of the bad things about it is those, those, um, indentures can vary widely from subdivision to subdivision. But all that is to say, um, given the public comment on this and my discussions with the city attorney, unless Mr. Brown is, is wildly opposed to this, can we get Rick on here? There he is. Um, so unless you, Rick, are, are, uh, wildly opposed to this, um, in, in other words, we don't have some sort of exigent need to do this right now. What I would suggest the council consider is a motion to postpone this to the next meeting to give Rick and the city attorney time to, uh, consider what was stated tonight, maybe reach out to not only the trustees that were here this evening or representatives, but also, uh, examine what typical requirements of other HOA, um, indentures are and, and the pros and cons. And I have a feeling this is one of those things, as with a lot of things we deal with, that there may not be uh, an answer to it. That's, that's going to make everyone happy. And, and in fact, it could cause, um, issues in either direction. But that, that would be my suggestion, just to maybe have some, some additional thought given to it unless there's an immediate need uh, on the part of the city to move forward with this in, in, in a particular case. So Rick, I guess I'll ask that as a question. So the council can have that information before they decide what they want to do with this. Is there an immediate need for this to be in place, this resolution?
Um, mayor, not from the department's perspective, no.
Okay, thank you. So if the council is in agreement with that, it would require a motion to postpone to the next meeting to allow that, um, analysis and to occur. Councilmember Clark?
I would make that motion to postpone.
Seconded by Councilmember, uh, Ottenberg. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? See no discussion, all in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, it's postponed. All right, now, that leaves on the consent agenda, uh, the minutes from the February thirteen meeting. Uh, approval of expenditures. And we have one appointment, uh, remaining, Ms. Leslie Jones from Ward Five, uh, who previously served, uh, very well on our Board of Ethics. And, uh, would also be appointed, uh, I'm proposing to our Architectural Review Board and to the vacant Ward Five position on the Wildwood Celebration Commission. And last, uh, resolution twenty twenty three dash six, which relates to a contract with Finch Audio for audio and lighting, uh, support of our concerts for twenty twenty three. Um, if everyone is still okay with these items being on the consent agenda, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented will take care of all of them in tandem. Would someone like to make that motion or separate them out and vote on them separately? Councilor Jaxi makes the motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Dodwell. Uh, any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda is now presented? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda is presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that takes us to miscellaneous. Does anyone have anything on a miscellaneous? We, that was on the consent agenda. Yeah, that was the Finch Audio one. Uh, Councilmember Brose, but thank you for asking. Gonna make sure we get it right. Councilmember Brose?
Yeah, I, I would just like to thank, uh, many members of the city staff who helped with the Ward One, uh, Town Hall Meeting. It was yet another night not to be at home. Um, and then I'd also, uh, in, in doing the meeting, the city has, I, I don't know if it's some guidelines or I don't know what, what it was called, but it was a memo I got from Meg, and I'll call it that. But it essentially outlines, I guess, how they should be run, but it includes a restriction on the city not providing, like beverages.
The what?
The city not re-providing beverages such as coffee and water. And I, I would just say, could we revisit that and?
Without objection, I would ask, uh, that the Admin Public Works Committee, uh, look at that at its next meeting or when it can fit on the agenda. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for bringing it up. Okay, so that's what will be done. Uh, Councilmember Hopper?
Yeah, just something real quick. I know, uh, there's been a little bit of a communication back and forth, um, regarding Old State Road. Um, one of the items has been, um, potentially limiting, um, the size of vehicles that could travel that southern part of Old State where it is very curvy and, uh, honestly, if, if a larger sized vehicle there's came through there, they'd have probably have a really hard time staying in their lane as it is. Um, so I, I know it's a county road and the county holds, uh, jurisdiction over that, but if there was no opposition, um, I thought maybe be a good idea for, uh, the city to reach out to the county and, you know, provide a favorable opinion on if they were so, to so choose to restrict that, then we would be, uh, on board with that.
Okay, uh, so specifically restricting what kind of traffic again, Councilmember Hopper?
Large vehicle, so talking a tractor trailer or, you know, yeah, obviously there probably have to be some research done on their part to figure out exactly the size, but, um, you have a large truck pulling a pretty good sized trailer, and there have been some that come down through there. Um, there, there, there's no way they would make that without crossing lanes and, you know, somebody not paying attention, that, that could, that could be real bad. So I guess I know we have no control over it, but if we could at least reach out to the county and say, yeah, that would, you know, we, we would support that if they were so inclined.
Um, so I would maybe add to that if you're okay with it and the council's okay with it, that not only do we reach out to the county relative to that, but we have a report back at our next meeting as to the outcome of that reach out? Would you be okay with that?
I would be very much in favor of that.
Okay, so is there any objection on the part of the council? You heard the request and, and my little tweak to it. Uh, any objection on the part of the council relative to this item? Okay, it'll be done. Thank you, Councilmember Hopper. Anything else? Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes, I'd just like to invite everybody who lives in Ward Five to our Ward Five resident meeting this Wednesday.
Thank you. Councilmember Edens?
If I'm last on, on a happy note, I just wanted to thank the Parks and Recreation Staff. Um, in the memo, there was certainly a robust offering of uh, things to do, everything from early childhood development to opportunities for adults to recreate in our community through the spring. I um, am participating in the Cabin Fever hiking challenge with my father. Um, and these are the things that makes a community a community. On the trail, um, I ran into our Planning and Zoning Committee volunteer, Ms. Vicki Helfrey, and, um, we both and her daughter, and we all missed, uh, the first picture sign, but I think found it later. So I'm looking forward to participating again, and the feedback on the trail was just phenomenal. People were there just for that particular event. Other people were in the area asking questions, looking at the signs, saying, oh, well, maybe I should participate and get a T-shirt too. So this is what memories are built on, and I appreciate it. So, you know, if you don't see me in the beginning of April, it's because, you know, I tripped down a ravine on that next seven miles. So just with my dad, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. So seeing nothing else, thanks to each one of you, uh, council members for, uh, another excellent meeting, uh, in behalf of our city. And, uh, that takes us to an adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Made by Councilmember Garrettano, seconded by Councilwoman Ottenberg. It's a non-debatable motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.